Good morning, everyone. This is day three of our Budget and Appropriations Committee for the budget. I am Councilman Paris Gray, committee member for the Budget and Appropriations Committee, and I represent the great District Eight City Council. Also joining us today is Vice President Sharon Green Middleton. And also joining us today, we have Councilwoman Odette Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Councilman, sorry, from the Fourteenth District. And from the Eleventh District, we have Councilman Zach Blanchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We also have several representatives from the mayor's office and city council president's office. And staffing this day three for the morning will be Paroma Nandi. I am so sorry about that. On the agenda today is Council Bill 250060, Ordinance of Estimate for Fiscal Year Ending January 30th, 2026, Day Three Agency Budget Hearings. For the purposes of providing appropriations estimated to be needed of each agency of the city of Baltimore for operating programs and capital projects during the fiscal 2026 year, effective beginning July 1, 2025, due June 30th, 2026. There will be a change in committee rules as all council members will be allowed to ask questions during the budget hearing. I'm also here to inform you that if you have your cellphones or any of your electronic devices, to please turn them off or mute them. And also, listening devices, and also to let you guys know, there will be no public testimony allowed during budget hearings. We're going to start our agency presentation. And starting off, we have the Board of Liquor License Commissioners, and the agency representative is Douglas Page. Ms. Page, yes, sir, you have the floor.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Douglas K. Page, and I'm the Executive Secretary for the Board of Liquor License Commissioners for Baltimore City. We thank you for this opportunity to present this morning. The Board of Liquor License Commissioners for Baltimore City is tasked with enforcing and regulating the rules and state law governing alcoholic beverage license. We also regulate and enforce adult entertainment licenses in Baltimore City. Mr. Chair, if I may introduce my executive team. Joining me today is a Deputy Executive Secretary, Michelle Wordsberger, awesome team member; our Assistant Executive Secretary, Stacy Russell; Chief Inspector, John Chris Amalas, who has an awesome enforcement and inspection unit; our newest inspector, one year, Zane Nazir, one year, a few months, and a father to a newborn, just two days ago. So he's here. Our awesome community liaison, Matt Ochheimer, sometimes called Ackman, or Ack, he can never pronounce his name correctly, but he's a very familiar face to this body and to City Hall. We greatly appreciate the work that Matt does. And last but not least, we're joined by our accountant, Sophia Marsh Reed, who keeps the books for us. And I would like to say on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, our Chairman, Albert Matriciani, Commissioners Ed Rodsinger, Commissioner Granville Templeton, and Commissioner Harvey Jones, and we're also joined by a former commissioner, who really started the process of reform eight, 12 years ago, I mean, meaningful reform, soup to nuts, Dana Moore. We are, I think, an awesome agency. We have 19 employees, four commissioners, three permanent, one alternate, and an appeals counsel. As I said previously, we are charged with the responsibility of enforcing and regulating liquor license establishments in Baltimore, licensed establishments. But have we gone beyond licensed establishments? We are very much a part of collaborating with our sister agencies, especially the Social Club Task Force, to make sure that all establishments in Baltimore City are being good neighbors. Today, the Deputy Executive Secretary will provide the overview of who we are, and what we do, and where we are. And thank you for this opportunity to present today, and before this honorable body. And council members and the chair, thank you for your engagement. We greatly appreciate it.
Alrighty, good morning. As Mr. Page said, my name is Michelle Wordsberger. I am the Deputy Executive Secretary for the Liquor Board. I serve as general counsel and basically the operational manager for the agency. Today, I'm going to kind of walk through our slides and tell you what we've been doing and what we plan to do. But as Mr. Page mentioned, we have two different services that we provide. We provide licensing, and then we also provide compliance. So those are the two service numbers that are in our budget. And they are two very different kind of halves of a whole, right? We give them the license, and then we make sure they are in compliance with the laws and the rules of the Liquor Board. All right. So this last year has been an opportunity for us to kind of level set. Many, many years, as Ms. Moore was on the board, there was a huge culture shift at the Board of Liquor License Commissioners. And they revolutionized how the agency was functioning. In the last year, what we've done is, we have said, okay, here's the processes that were in place. Do they work? Do they work for our licensees? Do they work for the agency? Do they work for the communities? And we have been really trying to streamline and cut out any red tape that is not helpful, frankly, to anyone. We hear oftentimes people complaining that it is very difficult to do business in Baltimore City. And we want to be a change agent. We want to make sure that our liquor licensees are able to function. We want them to succeed. We want them to succeed while they're also complying with the law. So we've worked on that. We also created a new program. It's called the Monetary Penalty in Lieu of Hearings Program. Many years ago, the state legislature empowered the board to create a program wherein licensees who violate Liquor Board rules could be offered a settlement instead of going to a hearing. Because sometimes it takes many, many months to get them on the docket, to get any additional witnesses, fire, health, et cetera. And they have to hire legal counsel. It's quite a production. So this last year, we put regulations in place. We engaged community. We spent a lot of time engaging community to make sure that they were comfortable with the process, so they didn't think that these violations were being swept under the rug. That program is very robust. It went into effect after September 20th. To date, we have offered 21 settlements. Two were denied. We're waiting for three to come in. They're due June 2nd. We've raised approximately $14,000. We are, in the next year, or in the summer, we're going to refresh the rules because there's some legislation that has gone into effect that we need to develop regulations on. We're going to refresh this program, and we're really excited about that. We also have been working really hard to strengthen our violation cases, making sure that our inspectors are prepared to testify. These are not lawyers. They're not law enforcement agents. They haven't gone through that sort of training. So making sure that they are, they understand the importance of their evidence. We've also engaged in a process where we are collecting different types of proof. We have started taking video and showing video, which really changes the dynamic of the case. And the majority of our violation cases, the licensees agree, they admit, that they've engaged in the violation. We also started engaging aggressively with our licensees. In this, every year, as you probably know, liquor license have to be renewed. They have to submit their application by March 31st. And pretty much every year, we have the same types of mistakes from licensees. Either they're not filing them properly, they're not giving us all of the documentation that we need, or they're missing some information. So we said, well, why don't we talk to them about what is required? So we had two different information sessions, the first time ever in the history of this agency. One was in person, one was virtual. It was very well attended, and definitely is going to be a springboard for things to come. Again, we've also had increased direct engagement with communities. You all know Matt. But this year, as we were updating the regulations, particularly around the monetary penalty, we pulled together, in two separate meetings, a cross-section of community leaders throughout the city to really engage and talk about this monetary penalty program. I'm an alcohol law geek. I have been for a really, really long time. Dana knows, she certainly knows. I could talk about this stuff for hours. But these community members were engaged for over two hours, talking about minutia of liquor laws. It was so cool, and we're going to continue to do that. It was really awesome. And we were able to talk to them about kind of the process as it is now, too, and really fill in some gaps for them. It was fun. Again, I'm a little bit of a dork. We also created a program for the 50% rule. This is a law that has been on the books for a really long time. Councilwoman Ramos is very, very familiar with this. And so basically, what this law says is, if there is a new license going into a location or an expansion of a license, over 50% of the residents and property owners within 200 feet of that liquor license can object to that license being issued to that property. And while the law has been on the books for a long time, there's been no process for how to engage in that. And so to make it fair, and for both licensees and communities to know what to expect, we created a very detailed process with timelines, so that everybody gets information at the same time, and where we engage with the Department of Planning, so that they identify the properties within that footprint. Again, it's fairer, so I'm not looking at it. You know, nobody can say, well, you know, Liquor Board just doesn't want this, or they do want it. This is an outside agency who identifies the properties and the owners, and then we provide all of that information to both parties. Very excited about that. The other thing that we've done is increased our transparency. So up until this year, nobody really knew what licensees had violated rules. And so this year, we started posting them. And so you can go on our website and see, we just started a new license year, May 1, so you can see the violations from this particular license year and from last license year. Yep. I don't have this on there. And so, but I can provide links to the council if you want to see that. So those are the things that we did last year. We are going to continue that momentum in the next year. One other thing, before I move on from this current year, is you all, some of you were present. We finally moved our hearings into our new hearing room last month, or at the beginning of this month, actually. So that is a huge game changer. We're no longer using City Hall, and through a coordination with B-SIT, Charm TV, and the Sheriff's Office, we were able to bring that home. All right. Now, for the next year, our goals are equally as aggressive. We are going to continue to maintain our 95% compliance with our record to respond to 311 calls within 72 hours. For the most part, we are responding to 311 calls within two hours of a complaint. There are situations where sometimes community members will submit the complaint the next day. And then if that's the case, sometimes we will engage with them and say, well, first of all, we will always engage and say, please submit it in a timely manner, so we can come out when the problem is occurring. But also, put it in our list, in case, you know, it's something that needs to be investigated, if this is something that is an ongoing issue. We're going to continue to collect at least 85% of our violation fines within the timeframe ordered by the board. Typically, the board will give licensees 30 days to pay the fines that they issue. For the monetary penalty program that we've talked about a little bit earlier, we give them 30 days in which to admit guilt, pay the fine, and give the form back or request a hearing. But we're also going to increase the use of this monetary penalty. Again, this allows for us to address violations swiftly, provide correction to licensees who may not know better. We intend to increase and enhance our outreach to our community residents. We want to improve our newsletter and increase those specialized meetings with community members as we look to enhance our regulations this summer. We also want to initiate a comprehensive engagement strategy designed to support our liquor licensees, while ensuring that they are following the rules. What we do currently is, we have them, they submit an application, they go to a hearing, we give them a license to sell a highly regulated product, and we say, good luck. And then we are shocked and dismayed when they do not follow the rules. And your community members, your constituents, call and complain, how can we rein these people in, et cetera. And so part of the new regulations, we're going to require new licensees to come to an information, that's a moth or a butterfly? I don't know if that's a good sign or a bad sign. We're going to require new licensees to participate in an information session. But even before we get there, we've already scheduled out for the year. Every single month, there will be one information session where licensees can voluntarily come, learn about the process, and it's really about, you know, some very basic stuff. If you don't have live entertainment on your license, do not have a DJ. Hey, and you know what? Don't have a hookah. Don't sell hookah. But it's also some really nuanced stuff. If you close because there's a death, or because there's a fire, or there's a flood, if you close for 90 days, you have to have a hearing to reopen. If you close for more than 180 days without requesting a hardship, your license expires as a matter of law. These are things that licensees need to know, and we want them to know, because we want them to succeed. So one of the documents that you have in front of you is a flyer that we have been giving out to licensees that kind of gives some little tips. Again, also don't have adult entertainment. If you are not an adult entertainment licensee, do not have adult entertainment. That seems pretty basic, right? And it talks about the hookah, but it also gives the times and dates for all of those outreach sessions. So the performance measures that are here on this, the Service 850 Liquor Licensing, which is also the adult entertainment licensing, our goal is to continue to have at least 1,150 licenses renewed annually. The adult entertainment licenses and the liquor licenses are renewed at different times. We are just on the tail end of the liquor licenses being renewed, and we are starting the process to renew the adult entertainment licenses. And then for public hearings concerning new licenses, transfers, and expansions, we are hoping to have at least 180 of those. Again, the goal to reaching out to these licensees is explaining to them the process. Many of them have attorneys to help them, but some of them can't afford to have, you know, that kind of guidance of, you know, this is what you need, here's the timeline. And frankly, some of them don't have attorneys. And so that outreach is going to be really, really important. The next service is the Liquor License Compliance. And this is where, for the most part, you all get the calls, the emails, the late-night tests from your constituents. And this is the service where we are making sure that the licensees on both fronts, liquor and adult entertainment, are compliant with the laws and the rules of the Liquor Board. As we talked about earlier, the plan is for the next fiscal year to maintain the 95% of 311 calls being abated or closed within 72 hours. And then the percentage of charge violations sustained at board hearings be at least 90%. Again, for the most part, the majority of the licensees, when they come into these hearings, they're admitting guilt right off the bat, because they know that we've done our homework, they've seen the evidence that we have collected, and they admit what they've done. With that, I'm going to, should I stand here to field questions, Madam Chair, or should I sit down?
So, please sit down.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. Once you get seated, we'll start the questions. And Vice President Middleton, you're going to be first. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess I just first want to say thank you all, many of you I'm familiar with and past jobs that you have had, and just appreciate all the work that you're doing. And what you do is part of solving a lot of the problems in our communities that are in concentrated areas that basically feed into, you know, the ills of society. So it is a very hard task. But with my longevity, I noticed a huge change. And I think, as you know, I haven't been to the Liquor Board in basically years. So that alone shows that there has been some drastic change. There was a time that I was in that office and hearings like every other week. But there, of course, is always room for improvement. And to start off, I do want to thank you two for the little, small newsletter that we get from your office. It's very important, and my staff, we share that through my newsletter or just other venues. I want to also go back to, you know, Park Heights, of course, was one of the first to really do the advocacy for the controversy between packaged goods and lounges. And, oh my goodness, a lot of that has really cleaned up in that area. We know that at one time in that 5,100 block, there were four liquor establishments in that one block, and we've seen improvement in that. I just, you know, thank you for everything that you do. So my question, signage. Some of these establishments still have all, you know, I don't know if you get involved in that, or is that connected with housing? But they, you know, they cover like all the windows, and there is a law that I think 20% of the window has to be exposed so the people can see inside, and the police can see. And I don't know if you're part of that enforcement. It would be nice if you were, if you're not, because, you know, that's part of the problem, too, for the ones that are lingering. And then also, to go with that, there are still some, I guess, packaged good lounges that are houses, and they're, I can give you the example like Wally, and that are still very terrible problems in the community. And as this city is going through a major revitalization, you know, we still need to figure out how we're going to tackle those locations, and of course, help the businesses if they need to be relocated or whatever. So if you'd like to just respond to some of the things I mentioned.
Absolutely. So, Madam Vice President, I was with you in many of those fights. And I still remember walking down Park Heights Avenue in the dark with a whole contingency of folks to see those back rooms of the BD7s, where you need to have a special handshake, a special knock, and a password to get in the back. I will never forget that. And, you know, and I stood beside you and many of your constituents in those fights. And things are different, but there's so much more that we can do. I think the issue about the signage is an information issue. That is a communication issue. We have got to communicate with these licensees and explain to them what they can do, what they can't do. And I'm going to personally take that on as something that we will focus on in the next fiscal year, because I agree with you. It's not only unsightly for the kids who are seeing these advertisements. It's a safety issue, right? And we have seen instances where bad things have happened inside liquor license establishments, not through a fault necessarily of the licensee, but nobody can see in. So I agree with you. And then the second part of that is, and I will rely on each and every one of you to help us get that information out, because you do have networks. We have our own network, but you have your network. You know who the people in your district, bless you, are paying attention to these issues. And so we're going to heavily rely on you to help us get that information out. And as to the packaged goods, that is a blessing. That is an issue that continues to be problematic. It is something that we have, if you look at our form online, you will see, there have been many, many, many BD7s that have been brought before the board, who have continued to not have their tavern part open while the packaged goods store is open. You know, bless you. And, you know, that is, it's real simple. If you have a seven-day-a-week beer, wine, and liquor BD7 license, you have got to have, you have to allow for onsite consumption when you are selling packaged goods for people to drink at their home, period. A lot, you know, and through the years, there has been the creation of the A7, and we have a whole program to help facilitate that conversion of those licenses. So if you want to be open seven days a week, but you do not want to deal with the hassle of onsite consumption, you need a different license. Your mic is not on.
Thank you for that question, Madam Vice President. The Wally Avenue location, as we know, during the comprehensive rezoning, a lot of those corner stores were located in R8 zonings and had to conform by a certain date and time. A lot of them failed to do that. I think that matter is still in court, is being challenged. But we still have to regulate if they have a license. We have to enforce if they have a license. So I know exactly what location you speak of on Wally Avenue, and we'll pay attention to that and follow up with you on that location.
Thank you for that. And then, I guess, my second question. We need to look at, and I don't know if you are involved in that, too, but we have a number of bus stops in front of liquor stores that, you know, where our youth catch the bus, and it's just so, well, it's not where I would want my child to catch a bus in front of a liquor establishment. And it's, we have to strategically figure out where to move these bus stops. If it's just down at another corner, I think it's worth it. But this is really around the whole city, and again, I'm sure it has to do with the age of our city and things in the past. But we need to have a hard look of looking at the bus stops and moving them away from every single liquor establishment. How should we handle that?
May I? Thank you for that question. Statutorily, we don't regulate those bus stops, but we have absolutely been engaged with communities who've seen the problem and have addressed their problem with MTA, and we've supported the community's efforts to have those bus stops removed in the past. And we will continue that, forget a call from a community saying, we need your support. Forget a call from a community saying, "We need your support to have this bus stop removed because of the high traffic or loitering." We will absolutely continue to support that.
We'll work together with you.
Absolutely.
And that would be another big change, that would be a positive change, you know, around the city.
And we don't have a problem going outside of our comfort zone
Okay.
to assist communities and the council and districts.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and thank you to the team of the Liquor Board and the Social Task Force team, because you were talking about the windows and excessive window coverage, and I definitely remember when I needed help on Bel Air Road, and you guys really came through with removing excessive signage and educating a business owner on what they were supposed to do and what they were not supposed to do, and I appreciate that. We're gonna go to Councilman Gray at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. Great to see some familiar faces. Thank you for all the work you guys have been doing, just reaching out, always being of service whenever I reach out to you, you know, in past and present. I have a couple of questions. I'm wondering if you all have considered a notification system, the council members, when there's a new request in your district for a liquor license, much akin to like how the permit offices send out like an automatic notification? Say it again. Yes. And similarly, the permit office notifies the council when a business requests like a late-night operation permit to give opportunity for council persons and community to weigh in? Just wondering if you could just do that just across board, just so we can often alert the community, let them know if there's a new establishment or if there's any type of change in the permitting, I mean, the licensing of a liquor.
Yep. So, Councilman, we send out a docket two weeks before every hearing. At last year's budget hearing, there was a request that we add the council district and state legislative district to each case, so that you could and your staff could quickly peruse and see which ones relate to you and your constituents. And so we send that out. We added that like the next week. And if you are not yet receiving that, we will make sure you are added to our distribution list, because that is really invariable, invaluable, thank you. Not only just for new licenses, but the violations too. Because the folks are gonna, if you're not getting them already, you will be getting, you know, constituents monitoring these certain establishments in your district, and they're gonna want to know.
And what would be the hurdle in ensuring that we can get just a direct notification the same way that we
Capacity.
Yeah. Capacity?
Yeah. I mean, because we, we're already sending it to you, right? And so it's just, we're preparing it, we are telling you which ones are in your district, and what you're asking for is one that is just to you, right? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. And I understand like violations, because that would be a lot. But like a new license, they're not coming about every day.
So maybe we, let's take this offline. Let me show you our docket that we're sending to you, and so that you can kind of see what we're already doing for you, and see if there's any way that we can tweak it, any additional information that you might need or want as these hearings are being scheduled. Does that sound like a reasonable strategy?
Yeah, yeah. We'd definitely do that. I would also like to, I guess it would be committee requests, talking a little bit about the bad actors or repeat offenders. I know there's a tracking mechanism that keeps radar on those establishments that have repeated findings or justifications, but I was wondering if there was one also for just multiple complaints? And is there anything public-facing our community members can see for those establishments in their communities that are like multiple violators or have multiple complaints?
I'm gonna start, and then I'm gonna hand it off to our chief, and Matt might want to weigh in as well. So, like I did say, those folks who we are bringing in, we are keeping track of those so that the, and it not only has the, you know, the trade name, it has the license type, the address, which council district, which legislative district, the date of the violation, so that you and your constituents can kind of track kind of how often. The number of the violation, whether or not they've been offered the monetary penalty, if they were, if they did, whether or not they accepted it, and then the disposition date, the date in which either the board found them guilty, or they accepted the monetary penalty and we announced it at a hearing, because that's one of the steps we have to take. The 3-1-1 calls that people make, I believe, are searchable in the open Baltimore. But on that point, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tap out and pivot to you.
Good morning. So they, so if you can search your own complaint, we actually, with Matt's help, we kind of changed the 3-1-1 system as from the normal, because what was happening is if you are a bad actor and you have a cell phone, you can constantly check your address and see if a 3-1-1 complaint came in. And then you would change what you're doing till my inspectors came, and then when they left, you continued doing what you're doing. So we were able to change that where it's not, unless you put in the complaint, you cannot see it till after we close the complaint. Also, a lot of times, if things escalated to law enforcement level criminal activity, we would say that it would be referred to and who it would be referred to. We don't want the licensee or the bad actor, for say, to be able to see that we are referring that, and they're gonna be investigated. So we do track hotspots, as we like to call them in the office, areas of high concentration, establishments with many violations. We'll track that, and we monitor that regularly, even if they don't have a 3-1-1 complaint. It's a little bit of a touchy subject to just go by the 3-1-1 complaint, because we have a few establishments that get four to five calls a day by an anonymous person for things like operating outside of hours, and it's right in the middle of the day. So we can't really hold that against the licensee. But we do track places that have high violations, and we do monitor them. We monitor their social media. We monitor their flyers, your calls to us from the city council members telling us what they're hearing, and we will continue to investigate.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions for this round. Thank you.
And Councilman Gray, just so we can make sure we captured your request correctly.
No committee request, sorry. They answered it.
Perfect. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for, you just spend a lot of time in my district, and I really appreciate it, walking my residents through the legal challenges that might occur and all of that. So I do appreciate it. I learn a lot from all of you. I have two questions. One is, you spend a lot of time with our district, and there's 14 of us, so that's a lot. And you've got, in addition to spending time with us, you're trying to educate the licensees in this new vision of yours, just basically so that they can't say, "Well, I didn't know," right? So that cuts out the sort of, the board saying, "Well, you didn't know, we'll give you a chance," right? Well, no, you didn't know, we trained you. So I see that in the book, you have a current level of service, so that there's no increase in your capacity in order to achieve all of this. Is that even possible? What are, what capacity needs are you, what do you need in terms of getting this done for us and also to make sure that the licensees know what they're doing?
That's a great question, and thank you for that. This team before you is extremely ambitious, and most of you I've worked with for a really long time, and you know that I don't necessarily stand by, "Well, we've always done it this way." And so, you know, so we've laid out this plan of things that we think are going to be good, not only for our licensees, our communities, and for the agency, but that will really help move us forward. But I do have some anxiety, I can't lie. Those of you who work with Matt may not realize he is a part-time contractual employee, and I've been trying to get him full-time. I did ask for a little bit of money to move that forward. We did not get that. And so I'm anxious about, you know, Matt's response to messages on holidays, weekends, his birthday, you know, in the morning, late at night, you know? And at some point, if I cannot make him full-time, not only is the agency gonna lose him, but your communities are gonna lose him, and that's gonna be a great loss to us. And then, you know, we did ask also for a liaison, a licensee liaison. We spent all this effort and time engaging with community, but we're not doing the same for our licensees. And you may know, the legislature increased substantially their annual license fees last year. We've got to give them some value for the money that they are paying for us. And so we did ask for, you know, and that's this whole vision of, "Let me help you so you can succeed, and so that you don't turn into a nightclub at 11 o'clock because your business plan is failing, and now, you know, and so now you're breaking all of the liquor rules," right? But we didn't necessarily get that either. And so we'll see. We're gonna try and do the very, very best that we can, but we're not gonna be able to do everything that we could do and should do.
So that was, I'm just guessing here, possibly, you know, so a person and then making Matt full-time. Was that an arrangement of like $250,000?
No, it was actually less than that. It was about $202,000.
Okay. Yeah, and I think, you know, one of the things that you would be able to do also with increased capacity is think through what my colleague is asking as well, because we get those dockets two weeks ahead, and me and my staff read them. I admit, sometimes I miss things. But also, if I have to prepare my communities to be ready, two weeks is not enough time.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, in an emergency situation, people will get ready, but I don't think that that's enough time. So I think that, just to consider
Yeah.
another reason why that would be, that would be important. So thanks for that.
Yes, ma'am.
My second question is about the announcement that the sheriff and the SAO and a bunch of other people made the other day in our General Assembly about adding to the capacity of the sheriff to be able to, you know, help on the enforcement side, but also, you know, some folks that don't have liquor license that are still operating. And I can tell you which ones they are in my district. So can you tell me a little bit more about what the interaction between the city's Liquor Board is gonna be with the sheriff's office? And I know that that's still being built out, and so there, that you may not be able to answer fully until that gets built out, and I will ask the same question of the sheriff when he comes to us next week, or tonight, next week. But, you know, just give me a sense of what that's gonna look like.
Absolutely. I'm gonna talk a little bit, and then I'm definitely gonna pass it over to the chief as well. So we do get called for every single issue relating to liquor, whether or not we have jurisdiction or not. And so, and every single community has issues of illegal parties where they don't have permits, they don't have a liquor license. We've had situations where there's folks who have, are engaging in adult entertainment, they have like this whole pop-up adult entertainment club. But we, if they do not have a liquor license, we do not have jurisdiction. And we have, over the years, been collaborating, coordinating with BPD and the sheriff to try and address these problems. But you, we all know, and you're gonna hear from BPD in a couple days, that, you know, their numbers are so down, they can't, they don't have the manpower, frankly, to go after a little, you know, lady who's got a cooler that she's selling perhaps really dangerous alcohol out of. And so this new partnership, actually, it's not new, this enhanced partnership, will really allow us to deal with those issues in a real-time manner. And so we are building it all out still with the MOU. It will be, we will have to be clear about communication issues, legal issues, all that sort of thing. I'm sorry? It is, yes. It does go into effect October 1, but the partnership that we have, you know, that we will kind of roll out on that date is already in existence. It will just be more enhanced. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Chris Malice to talk a little bit about kind of already what we're doing, and perhaps some of the things that we're thinking about moving forward.
So, like Michelle said, a lot of times, we get all the complaints. And my bosses that are in front of me have told me, "I don't care if it doesn't have a liquor license, figure it out, get it to where it belongs to." So, with that being said, for the last five years, I have tried to navigate to see who, you know, handles illegal sock sales on the sidewalk. But in all seriousness, so we do get those complaints, and a lot of times, whether it is a bar in Pigg Town that might have some issues inside, but a lot of the issues are, let's just say, a parking lot across the street with people drinking and playing loud music, my inspectors go, they can obviously violate the establishment. There's nothing they can do to the people across the street in the parking lot drinking out of their cars. So this new unit is going to help with that. It's going to give relief to communities so that those issues are now addressed at the same time, whether the deputies are gonna be working hand-in-hand with inspectors. I'm sure we're gonna be doing a lot of joint things together, going out together, but even independently, the sheriff's office will be able to handle those activities that are outside of the Liquor Board. One of the biggest issues that licensees, council members, senators, delegates, I don't think anybody from the White House yet has called me, but, is the illegal parties. That is a huge problem in all of Baltimore, and that's another thing that this new neighborhood service unit is going to be tackling.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. I think we're all looking forward to more details. And again, please consider us a partner in that, and really whatever else you're doing. We've got our networks, as you said, but we're also on the ground. You know, we're the ones hearing and seeing, in a lot of cases, what's going on. So I appreciate that very much, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Blanchard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we're short on time, so I'll just say, you guys are great, really great. My mind is still blown that Matt is part-time. That doesn't like, I don't understand that. And I'd just say, it's, you know, it's really important to both hold liquor license holders accountable, but also make it easy to do good business in the city. And I think you guys, you know, work that line really well. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, well, thanks, Councilman Blanchard. And we do have two additional questions. You guys can close out. Counsel is gonna be Councilman Gray, followed by Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you. Can you just briefly, because we want to make this as quick as humanly possible, what is a criteria for which someone can pay in lieu of hearing? And I ask this because just my concerns over a loophole for just the worst of our offenders being able to just pay the fine, depending on how much money you can make. It may be worth it just to pay the fine instead of actually having to go before the board. And also, is there a review of those businesses that utilize the in lieu of rather than having a hearing?
I missed the last part of your question.
Is there a review of those businesses that are the frequent
Yep.
in lieu of payers instead of going to a hearing?
Yep. And actually, I should have handed out with the flyer, I have a breakdown of the program. It gives us, gives you the rule as well as the matrix. And so let me just say this, there are certain types of violations that are not eligible. And for instance, if state law states very clearly And for instance, if state law states very clearly that if you have a liquor license, you need to be the owner and operator of your establishment. If we think that you have violated that rule, you are not eligible for that program. Similarly, if you have violated the general welfare rule, which, you know, we require our licensees to operate in a manner that does not disturb the health, health, safety, welfare, and peace of the community in which they are situated. If they are doing that, they are not eligible. If they're selling to minors, not eligible. And if they are engaged in sexual practices and obscenity, you know, if they are functioning as a, as a adult entertainment, they're not, they're not eligible. If there's illegal conduct on the premises, they're not eligible. If there's gambling, if there's discrimination, if they have lied to our inspectors, they are not eligible. So it's basically, you know, did they have records on site? Did they have their alcohol awareness certification? Are they functioning within the hours of operation? Now, that's a really important one, because in the last legislative session, the General Assembly increased the mandatory penalty for functioning outside of your, your legal hours of operation. So moving forward, I think that's July 1, if you, you know, if you're supposed to close at 2:00 AM and you are selling, or serving, or open at 2:15 AM, you have, you have to pay a fine of $1,000. So we're going to update that, and then second, and for more than that, it's a minimum $2,000, and it will increase up to $20,000. So, you know, some of the other types of violations are, you know, you have to have a sanitary bathroom. If you're not an A of regular packaged good, if you're a restaurant, a BD7, you have to have restroom facilities for your customers so that they're not leaving there and peeing on the, on, on your constituents' like, front lawn, right? Like, come on. So those are the types of things that are eligible. Now, what, they can only, right now, the way the program is in operation right now, for those eligible offenses, you cannot have more than two within four years. So it's not like you can rack up 20 monetary penalties and never see the board. It's a, hey, maybe you just didn't know, right? Maybe you just, maybe just you had an off day, right? We know our frequent flyers, we know the places that are problematic. On the whole, most are not. Most just have a bad manager, maybe, or they have an off night. But we are really familiar with the 20 or so bad actors that your community are concerned about. They are not a part of this, this program. Now, the other thing that I will say is, and we talked a lot about this with the communities when we were building this program, is that the one thing it does do is the licensees who accept the program, they have to admit guilt without mitigation. You understand what I'm saying? So, so when they go to the board after getting several bites at the apple with monetary penalty, and they're still charged with the same exact thing that they've just, yes.
Thank you, that's good to know. And then just one quick question. You spoke a few times about the illegal adult, adult operations. When you guys get notification of that, is there any type of coordination with the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, or any type of Health Department? And I only ask this because most of the times, these illegal operations, along with the legal ones, sometimes they're, they're sex trafficking. And so I was just thinking about, just in a holistic way, if you guys are going to go there for that reason, if you guys are partnering with, or if you guys have even taken the, the training, because Councilwoman Porter is chair of the Human Trafficking Collaborative, I feel like this would be a good way to make inroads into, one, you know, finding these folks for running this illegal operation, but two, for the, for the victims of the trafficking, getting them the help right there that they need.
Yes, so, great question. So about four years ago, I became part of the Sex Trafficking Task Force, which is with our federal partners, our city partners, and our state partners. At that time, I had all my inspectors go through a sex trafficking training. We attend the conference, myself and inspector attends the conference yearly, which gives us updated training. It's a four, four-day conference in Ocean City. A lot of the licensed establishments that are providing adult entertainment without a license, we haven't really seen trafficking. It's usually dancers from other adult entertainment just making extra money. If we do get notification of an underground, I believe last one that we were part of was like four years ago on Central Avenue, at that time, I do call our partners in the Sex Trafficking Task Force to research and look into it. And I will say that there is, I'm gonna watch what I say on TV here, but there is, there has been instances where we have turned over information for licensed establishments that either myself or one of my trained inspectors have suspected trafficking.
Thank you, that is, that is great to hear. Just because anecdotally, you hear about these, like, you know, parties that they're, they're having, and they go from place to place, or city to city, and it just, it seems nefarious on its face. And if they are selling liquor and someone, you know, the due diligence of our, our constituents, someone will call and just report it, you know, we can just uncover something bigger. So it's great to know that you guys have taken the training, and, but also, just to know that you guys also go to Ocean City, so you're aware of the blue, the blue dot and everything else, all the amazing services that have originated from Baltimore City. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I also want to give a quick shout-out to John and all the incredible work he does with the Human Trafficking Collaborative. Since coming into chair, you all have been working in great partnership with that collaborative, and just incredibly grateful for the work that you are doing. I want to follow up on contractual positions within the liquor board. Had there been any conversation about providing benefits and health insurance for said individuals? And I don't know if the administration or Calvin is here, or Nina is here to answer that. Oh. Thank you. And so the reason why I ask that is because when we have inspectors that have been working for 25, 30 years, and they have done such a great job for Baltimore City government, they have done your, your men's and your women's work, they deserve those benefits that all city government employees have.
Thank you for that question, Councilwoman. The only contractual employee we currently have is Matt.
Yes.
Yes.
And so does he have any?
Yeah.
Okay. And so is there a plan to make sure that that happens?
So one of the enhancements that we requested was kind of the gap funding I needed.
I see.
It's about $70,000.
Oh, the gap funding was $70,000?
Yeah, approximately, to make him full-time.
Yep.
You know, Matt busts his hump.
Yes.
Every single day, and that was really a priority for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much. The administration, would you all like to say anything?
Good morning. For the record, Justin Williams, Deputy Mayor for Community Economic Development. I share the general concern about needing benefits for as many workers as we can. The enhancement requests, I mean, I think the city administration was in a position where we had to be tight with enhancement requests, but I think it's definitely worth exploring through this process or any other process.
Yeah.
Because I recognize the value that Matt has, the community, as a former practitioner at the liquor board.
Yes.
I have dealt with him before, and it's been professional on both sides.
And, and thank you, Deputy Mayor, I really appreciate that, you know, given your role in economic development, you understand how important this role is to not only the board, but also liaising with our council's offices as well. And so I just want to go on record to say that, you know, this should be a priority, this is $70,000. Surely, we could find some sort of mechanism whereby we are allowing this to happen, this budget season. Madam Chair, my second question actually has to do with padlocking businesses. We understand, just to follow up on the Vice President's question, there are a few businesses within District 10 that have a very violent history as it relates to liquor licensing, liquor selling, and just overall integration of liquor within their business model. And have we gotten anywhere with the collaboration with the Baltimore City Police Department on updating padlocking laws, or even lowering the threshold of those nuisance businesses that are within our community?
So the, the padlock is, is the police commissioner's padlock, and we, I do sit on the committee when they bring people in. I wouldn't be able to answer what timing up, or maybe Michelle from her past life can, but...
And have there been any, I mean, more importantly, have there been any conversations that we as the council can help from a legislative perspective that you all see?
Now, I, I, I think that, and I'm putting on my BPD hat for a moment. You know, there is some anxiety around closing down an establishment and taking away someone's livelihood, like, that is, that is the atomic, you know, option. That said, I think that what you're going to see in the next year with our partnership with the sheriff's office, is there is going to be targeted enforcement around those areas where we know there's all kinds of cuckoo banana things that are happening outside of the establishment, so that perhaps we can lower the temperature through weather, and sometimes it's just having a body there, right? Lower the temperature so perhaps those things aren't, those acts of violence are not occurring. And so we're really excited about that. I, I, I think, you know, at the press conference the other day, it was awesome, having all of those partners in one room to talk about how all of these ideas are going to be put into use to try and address some of these historic problems, frankly. But, you know, I, I, I think that, and we, but a lot of attention was, was placed on the actual licensees, where most of the time, it's not them, it's the things that are happening in the ecosystem around, right? Sometimes they're contributing, for sure, without a doubt, sometimes they are contributing, sometimes they're not, and sometimes they're afraid. And so I think this partnership will help us, again, lend some support to those licensees who are not at all contributing to the problems, and, and address the bad behavior, those people who are making the decision to stand outside, to drink, you know, in their car, or on the sidewalk, and be loud, and bother the, the residents. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question is for the liquor board, but also for our deputy mayor. With the Be More Fast coming online, you know, and part of the, one of the components was the coordination of the liquor license and the liquor board with the permitting and all the other things that are going to go into Be More Fast. So my question is around, what was that timeline looking like? Because if they're needing additional capacity for coordination, and, you know, would that other person that they're asking for also feed into some of the coordination with, through the Be More Fast initiative?
So I think the liquor, the liquor board has been part of the permit stat process for a year and a half. I think the general push with Be More Fast is to make everything more efficient, we do top to bottom, make it easier to do business with the city. As Ms. Worsberger started in her opening remarks, it is about combating the perception that Baltimore is a place to do business in. And so, top to bottom, we want to do more collaboration, more efforts to make it easier. A good example is, we've talked to the clerk of the court already a couple times, because an issue I confronted in private practice as a liquor license attorney was that people who got a liquor license had to get a trader's license with the clerk of the court, and they don't know the process, and there'd be issues with the trader's license, the entity name not matching the entity name, because they applied it under LLC that's different, the land holding company's different than the liquor license holding company. And so those sort of things are frustrating even for attorneys, much less people who aren't represented. And so those sort of small things are easy, kind of easy fixes, which I think can reduce phone calls, liquor board staff, city staff, clerk of the court staff. And so the vision is, as part of the Be More Fast kind of holistic review, is to make everything more efficient, like that.
Right.
Kind of like this low-hanging red tape things. And then I guess also look at staffing levels across the board and say, hey, if we can be more efficient, maybe we can use, do fewer staff, or maybe we need to have more staff to get the process working, and maybe there's a, then we look at, then do we need to raise fees to be consistent with the service delivery, make sure the fees are covering the cost of providing the service.
Yeah, that's kind of the point of trying to at least start that conversation here, is to say, you know, what, what is that vision of all the coordinating, and whether the staff capacity is there that, that you need? So, but it sounds like you're still just starting that conversation about how that's, I mean, they've been involved with permit stat, yes.
Correct.
But like, yeah.
And yeah, I mean, I guess the Be More Fast work, I mean, it's been ongoing, it's sort of, we had an announcement, but it's been, it's happened before, we had a report and announcement, but it's ongoing and iterative, and I think, hopefully this summer or two will get to work after the budget hearing process, and I'm looking forward to really tackling some of these longstanding issues.
Yeah, I very much appreciate it, thanks. And I, I think maybe it's, this capacity conversation might dove into that as well. So thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And last, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a clarification question. The mayor has his revenue generated list, and I know that you've mentioned targeted increases in fees, and in one of his categories, citywide fine and fee increase, would that be in that category, or are your fees have to be approved through the state?
Our, our fees were increased at the state level last year. This year, there was an additional fee that was, that they are allowing us to charge, that is, and we haven't built out these rules and regulations, this is coming, but the legislature empowered the, the board to develop rules and regulations around the issuance, revocation, and denial of one-day liquor licenses, and along with that, a $250 expedited fee. Because what happens is, we get the call at 3:00 on a Friday for an event that's happening Saturday night, and they hadn't yet filled out an application for a one-day liquor license. So, and so we all have to, you know, we have to work overtime, you know, in order to approve that. So that's, so that has, that is in the works as well. But for the most part, our stuff, all of our fees are regulated at the state level, ma'am.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and thanks to the liquor board for, for joining us today. And we're going to be taking a brief recess before we move into the convention center.